We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Board of Public Works and Safety to order this time. We'll start with the rule call. Chrissy?
Hey, President Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Secretary Shelby Keys, I'm filling in for her, so Christina Martin. Board members Ernest Watson Jr.
Here.
Jeff Raiver.
Here.
City Attorney Todd Sammons.
Here.
Police Chief Matt Anderson.
Here.
Fire Chief Kenny Hahn.
Here.
And Street Water Sewer and Sanitation Superintendent Rose Black.
Here.
All right. Board of Works members, you provided minutes of the last meeting. How would you like to move on those?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the last meeting as they were presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We'll get into the agenda at this point where we'll start off with the Seventh Street Bid Authorization. Bryce, you want to take it or you want Andrew to step in?
Let Andrew step in.
All right. Good to see you again, Andrew.
You as well, Mayor. Thank you for having me. The first item that we have here on the agenda is the Seventh Street Bid Authorization. I should have checked, but I don't recall whether it was this board or the council that authorized the contract for the Seventh Street project. However, the contract was authorized nonetheless earlier this year. The design work has been completed and reviewed with Bryce, and we are at the point where we are ready to advertise for bids for the asphalt component of the work. As you may recall, from what we discussed this previously, the utility work is being self-performed by the city, but the asphalt work is being subbed out or put out for bids. So with that review being done and us being at the point where we're ready, we would like to put out, we would like to get approval from the board to authorize that work for bid, which would be basically advertising that for bids to come back and be opened publicly. Just for the record, I believe it is the Redevelopment Commission that authorized the work to move forward. So we'll be using those funds from them to complete this project. Anybody want to, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve for the Board of Works to allow the Seventh Street bid to go out for paving bids to come back to us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. We'll get into the agenda at this point where we'll start off with the Seventh Street Bid Authorization. Bryce, you want to take it or you want Andrew to step in?
Let Andrew step in.
All right. Good to see you again, Andrew.
You as well, Mayor. Thank you for having me. The first item that we have here on the agenda is the Seventh Street Bid Authorization. I should have checked, but I don't recall whether it was this board or the council that authorized the contract for the Seventh Street project. However, the contract was authorized nonetheless earlier this year. The design work has been completed and reviewed with Bryce, and we are at the point where we are ready to advertise for bids for the asphalt component of the work. As you may recall, from what we discussed this previously, the utility work is being self-performed by the city, but the asphalt work is being subbed out or put out for bids. So with that review being done and us being at the point where we're ready, we would like to put out, we would like to get approval from the board to authorize that work for bid, which would be basically advertising that for bids to come back and be opened publicly.
Just for the record, I believe it is the Redevelopment Commission that authorized the work to move forward. So we'll be using those funds from them to complete this project. Anybody want to, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve for the Board of Works to allow the Seventh Street bid to go out for paving bids to come back to us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lead Service Line Replacement Proposal and Task Order. I assume you're going to let Andrew talk to that one, too?
Yes, I'll give you some updates, too.
Okay.
Bryce, would you like to speak on that?
I'll express over.
Okay. Very good. So the task order that you have before you is for Lead Service Line Replacement Project. The city had received a grant to help out with the inventorying of the lead service lines, and then a subsequent grant as well to perform a preliminary engineering report related to lead service lines. That preliminary engineering report was submitted to the IFA SRF, and a favorable ranking was received for that project. What that means is that a funding offer was provided to the city for the work. In this case, what we are being offered is basically a 0% loan, which is not as good as it gets when it comes to loan rates. So that is, the offer currently is in the amount of $2 million, up to $2 million that could be borrowed. Our proposal tonight is for a project approximately $1 million in size. There is still a little bit of work to be done, I will say, with respect to whether we go for the full $2 million or we go for the $1 million. Nonetheless, the $1 million project is what's being considered tonight from the standpoint of we want to get started with this work and Ernest to be able to complete the work by the timeframe that is required by the IFA SRF. If things work out prop, ideally, I guess you could say, or favorably to a $2 million project, then what we would do is we would come back to the board and we would ask for an amendment to adjust the sizing of the project. Right now, though, for this task order 2025-07, this is for the design services, bidding assistance, permit assistance, and easement assistance for the project. This is service line work, so there will not be an Iden permit required, but this work is within the end-up roadway, so there will be an end-up permit that will be required for the work, and we will take care of that as a part of this project. If this is authorized and we move forward, we expect that the construction will occur in the summer of 2026.
How long is that loan for?
The loan? It's usually somewhere between 20 and 35 years as far as the payback period, and it's something that Baker Tilly will look at and structure for the city.
Now, we're going to go for the $1 million. Can you not make that motion?
Is there, I have a question, though. Is there a limit on this task order?
Yes.
Not to exceed?
Yeah, this is a breakdown of services. The design phases are lump sum. The bidding assistance, permanent assistance, and easement, sorry. Bidding assistance and easement assistance are hourly rates. Permanent assistance is lump sum. Currently, this request is for $90,000. If additional funds were required for any reason, it would have to come before this board and be granted.
Then we'll be ready for a motion.
Make the motion?
I've made a motion to accept the Lead Service Line Replacement Proposal and Task Order for Commonwealth Engineering, not to exceed $90,000. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor.
Utility improvements? I didn't want you to go too far. So this is just payment, Bryce, for DRF number 66?
Yes, sir. This is asset management planning on the water tower project and additional bidding services on the contingency lead service line project. Two separate invoices that total $1,601.
I'll make the motion to accept DRF number 66.
Second.
I've made a motion in a second to accept the Commonwealth Engineering DRF number 66 for $1,601. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Long-term control plan phase two and phase B, DRF number 14. Bryce, did you want to expand on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This covers bidding and negotiation and construction engineering through July of 2025, as well as the hydraulic modeling, permanent regulatory assistance through July of 2025. Two separate invoices that total $72,563.
Any questions?
No. Make the motion?
I've made a motion in a second to pay Commonwealth Engineering DRF number 14 for the long-term control plan for $72,563. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, 470 North Cullen. Isaac, you want to come on up? And just, we talked about trying to get the Redevelopment Commission to purchase the property from there, and the Redevelopment Commission isn't ready to pay that price, and I know you and I talked on the phone about that. So we're just kind of looking at any alternatives you may have, and we're happy to discuss with you.
Do you mind if I give some history on the property first?
Go ahead.
So Ralph Edward Ike Donnelly purchased the building originally back in 1990 as part of the peerless cleaners. He can buy in parcels in 2008 when they widened the roadway and passed away in 2011. Four years, the property sat in the hands of the state for his auction in 2015. It was purchased by Dean Maddox. Dean held the property for three years, and then on December 12th, 2018, sold it to me for a price of $70,000. On January 12th, one month from the date of purchase, I received a letter from Kenny asking me to reach out to the building department, which he was in charge of at the time. We missed each other a couple of times, but I received a certified letter on March 22nd. After that, it told me I had 30 days to remodel or move the building as it was in danger to the public.
Which, I'm sorry, Isaac, March 22nd of what year?
That was in 2018.
2018?
Yes.
Okay.
I got in contact with Kenny, met with him and the Unsafe Building Board on April 1st of that same year, and signed an agreement with them that agreed to two things. First, that was to board up the windows and doors, keep vagrants from occupying the building. And second, that I'd begin construction before July 1st, both of which I completed Wednesday, April 10th, and June 17th, respectively.
What year?
Of 2018. I began construction June 17th. On October 30th, I received a letter from the city informing, claiming that I had not begun construction. I reached out to Kenny again and presented pictures and evidence that I was working on the building. Kenny spoke with the city attorney, and the charges were dropped. The building was in worse condition than I originally anticipated when I purchased it. If you'll look at the first and second page in the booklet that I handed you, that was the condition of it in 2018 when I purchased it. And that has been the condition of it since at least 2008 and probably at least 20, 30 years maybe, as long as I can remember, anyway.
Any questions?
No. Make the motion?
I've made a motion in a second to pay Commonwealth Engineering DRF number 14 for the long-term control plan for $72,563. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, 470 North Cullen. Isaac, you want to come on up? And just, we talked about trying to get the Redevelopment Commission to purchase the property from there, and the Redevelopment Commission isn't ready to pay that price, and I know you and I talked on the phone about that. So we're just kind of looking at any alternatives you may have, and we're happy to discuss with you.
Do you mind if I give some history on the property first?
Go ahead.
So Ralph Edward Ike Donnelly purchased the building originally back in 1990 as part of the peerless cleaners. He can buy in parcels in 2008 when they widened the roadway and passed away in 2011. Four years, the property sat in the hands of the state for his auction in 2015. It was purchased by Dean Maddox. Dean held the property for three years, and then on December 12th, 2018, sold it to me for a price of $70,000. On January 12th, one month from the date of purchase, I received a letter from Kenny asking me to reach out to the building department, which he was in charge of at the time. We missed each other a couple of times, but I received a certified letter on March 22nd. After that, it told me I had 30 days to remodel or move the building as it was in danger to the public.
Which, I'm sorry, Isaac, March 22nd of what year?
That was in 2018.
2018?
Yes.
Okay.
I got in contact with Kenny, met with him and the Unsafe Building Board on April 1st of that same year, and signed an agreement with them that agreed to two things. First, that was to board up the windows and doors, keep vagrants from occupying the building. And second, that I'd begin construction before July 1st, both of which I completed Wednesday, April 10th, and June 17th, respectively.
What year?
Of 2018. I began construction June 17th. On October 30th, I received a letter from the city informing, claiming that I had not begun construction. I reached out to Kenny again and presented pictures and evidence that I was working on the building. Kenny spoke with the city attorney, and the charges were dropped. The building was in worse condition than I originally anticipated when I purchased it. If you'll look at the first and second page in the booklet that I handed you, that was the condition of it in 2018 when I purchased it. And that has been the condition of it since at least 2008 and probably at least 20, 30 years maybe, as long as I can remember, anyway. The more deconstruction I did on it, the more I realized needed done. Every time I took a board off, I realized the bricks underneath it were loose, and I just continued deconstructing it until I found solid material. Now, I'm just a one-person team. I work a full-time job, you know, which helps fund the project. Even so, next year and a half, I continue remodeling the building. I was worried the front wall was on the verge of collapse. On page four, you can see I hoisted the roof off of the front wall in order to deconstruct that. On pages three and six, I took down the facade, which was crumbling. Now, half of that building, when it was peerless cleaners, they put a concrete roof on. I determined that the walls that were currently there were not capable of supporting that. And so I personally, with a sledgehammer, demolished that and removed all the pieces. That took the better half of that summer. Then piece by piece, hauled that off-site. You can see pages five has that in deconstruction, and seven and eight show the in-process and the cleanup after that. That brings us up to 2020. I spent 2021 pre-tuckpointing the building, rearranging brick, re-mortaring, and putting the windows, which I also have in there, in the position that they were going to hopefully eventually be, and raise the walls back to, in preparation to raise the walls back to their original pre-deconstruction height. You can see that nearing completion on pages 10, 11, and 12. Now, I cannot fully predict the enormity of this undertaking any more than I could, you know, a worldwide pandemic or, you know, some of the worst economic times we've seen since the Great Depression. But you can see the progress that I've made. In 2021, I went to renew my permit with, I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. In 2021, Kevin Crawford assumed office of building inspector. He reached out to me, and I had a conversation with him, much as I'm having with you today, and explained the purpose of the building and brought paperwork up to date. During the year 2020, the brickwork reached completion, or very close to it. Started building on this foundation. You can see the building regaining its original height, this time with 12-inch wood studs on pages 13 and 14. I resubmitted, received my permit in 2023 in February. While I was there, Kevin informed me that he was leaving office after only being there for a little over a year. That summer, I continued to finish out wood framing and began working on siding. You can see on, I believe it's page 14 in the back corner, there's some sheeting that I was starting to put up when I was reached out to by Josh in August and had a meeting with him September 11th, where he issued me a stop work order.
What year?
That was in 2023.
What was the stop work order for?
Yeah. The, he decided to enact what he called an optionally enforceable law that would require me to seek state-submitted civil engineering plans before I continued the project.
Because you plan to use it for a commercial building, then?
For public space, a class-one structure, yes. I wasn't familiar with that at the time, so I asked for a little bit of time to look over. I looked over, I contacted a few of the engineering firms here in town and estimated that it would be around $20,000 to get civil engineering plans for the site. Now, like I said, I'm not, I work labor in construction, you know, I make $35,000 something a year. That was just outside of my scope at the time when I was trying to save up to put a roof on the building. So I made a meeting again with Josh, discussed it with him, and said, is there another way we can do this? Can we turn this to a residential? Can we turn it into cold storage? And that way, we wouldn't need a civil engineering plan because it wouldn't be a public building. That would put it as a class-two structure. That's when he told me that the city was interested in purchasing the building. Originally, I said, you know, I'd like to get the $70,000 that I originally spent on it back out. At this point, I've spent another $24,000 on materials, not including time and other things on the building.
Do you, I'm sorry, Isaac.
Yes.
Do you have a date when you guys talked about that the city was interested in buying?
The stop work order was on September 11th, I believe it was the next month.
2023 or 2024?
In 2023.
Okay. And then the next month?
October of 2023, we had a meeting.
Okay. So then, October of 2023, you talk about the city wanting to purchase it at that time?
That's what Josh informed me, yes.
All right. Go ahead.
I gave him originally a price of $70,000 because that's what I bought the building for. He said if it was under 50, then there was some, I don't know, legal thing that they didn't have to meet. And I said, that's something I'd consider. And so he told me to wait, and the city would give me a price. Couple of months passed, and I reached out again and said, you know, I expected this to come a little quicker. Can we look at residential? He said, no, hold on, the city's getting you a price. Now, that's almost two years ago.
Did he explain the reason why?
He said it was all in committee, that he was waiting for committees to decide on the price.
Was it, did he mention all the environmental studies that were being done?
Yeah, there was environmental studies. There was an existing environmental study that had been done on the property. For whatever reason, Joshua decided that was not sufficient, and so he determined that they should do their own environmental study.
Okay.
There was some paperwork I signed on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so that, you know, I wasn't idle during that time. You know, I've, you know, you may not know me personally, a lot of you, but I'm sure you've known what I've been a part of. I took the Carnegie Players, that 30-year-old theater group in town that was on the verge of collapse after COVID and turned it around. And now we own two lots in town and are remodeling a venue currently. I'm no longer the, you know, unknown laborer that came to the town six years ago and purchased a corner lot hoping to improve it. I've shown my dedication to this community and my intention to make it better.
So you said there was an environmental study already done to this?
There was, yes.
We had to do a different one?
Correct. That's what I was told.
Did they ever show you the new one?
No, I did not receive the new one. I do have a copy of the old environmental study that was done. That was done under the previous owner, not under myself. You know, if you look at the difference between page two there and page 14, you know, you can see that building sat for 30 years untouched, and in three years, you can see the progress that I made on it. Now, the city originally made me, on June 9th, I received an offer from the city for $13,000, which I turned down. On June 23rd, I received an offer from the city for $35,475. And at the time, I accepted this offer and told, and I was told that I would be receiving paperwork from Joshua, which, of course, I did not receive. So I know some of you want to tear the building down, and that's what you would like to do. I would like you to, I would like to accept the amount that you offered, and then you can do with the property what you like. Or if, as you said, the city does not want to spend the money, which I completely understand, I would like you to reissue me a permit, remove the stop work order. I will work with you. I would like to see it through as my original intention. I have building plans in the binders in front of you. But if that's not an option, then to turn it into cold storage, residential, I want to see this project done.
Okay.
Now, I have assessed the structure in its current state, and estimate it will cost me about $4,126 to side the building, which is the project I was starting on when I was issued the stop work order. This would side the outside, paint the brick, get it looking good so that it's no longer a site issue. That would not be putting a roof on the building. I can't afford to do that at this point, but I would have to save up for it. But that would remove the, the look of it, the bad look of it. And, you know, if I wasn't issued the stop work order, that would have been done a year and a half ago, and we wouldn't be having this meeting, I don't think. But that's in the past. I figure it'll take me about 186 man-hours to finish the siding, painting, which should take me about six months doing it in weekends, as I have been. The roof project, I estimate, will cost $31,000. But basically, I have waited for two years for this project. I hope that you would extend me the same courtesy and would give me another year to get the building looking good.
$31,000 on materials for the roof?
That is. No, that's including labor.
You're going to frame it and?
That's trusses.
You're going to frame it with trusses and sheet it, and shingle it for $31,000?
Yes. Yes. That's a, it's a 36-by-60 building. It's just a straight truss. There's no, you know, fancy roof angles to it. We just did the Franklin Street project. That's twice the size of that, and it has three different angles and one piece of flat roof. And that was close to 25 to get that done. And that was all new sheeting, all new shingles, all new. So the difference between that and this building, of course, is trusses, but it's much simpler, it's half the size, so.
I think they were trying to negotiate instead of actually make that offer. So they were trying to find a negotiation on a price that would be acceptable to the Redevelopment. So they were trying to find a negotiation on a price that would be acceptable to the redevelopment commission. And that's where the confusion comes from. The environmental studies took longer than I anticipated also. But I think the dates on the stop order were probably 2024 instead of 2023. Because I don't think Josh and I talked much about that unless the actual stop order. I don't remember when Josh got the position even, I know it was late 2023. But him wanting to stop the order and then how do you get a class one structure license from the state might be a date that I'm not sure. If you're 100% sure?
I am. I can, I have text messages and documentation to back that up.
And then in 2023, he said the city was interested in buying it? I wasn't in office, so I can't really say.
And he might have brought that up to you much later, but that's when I was informed of it.
Can you build on this siding? This is the first question.
Yes.
I mean, it seems like Josh was concerned and that's why he wanted you to go get that state license.
Because it was to be a public building.
Right.
If I can finish it out as not a public building. And that removes, that makes it a class two structure, that removes it outside of state governance, then it becomes a local building inspector matter. Now, I had received several building permits prior to Josh taking office.
Other jobs throughout the city?
No, for this project.
For this?
For this project. I have them right here. I have building permits both from Kenny Hahn and Kevin Crawford to complete the 470 North College project.
Can you make copies of that for me?
I can, yes.
Not for about tonight, but just bring that stuff to me and we can sit down. The issue is it doesn't seem like anything is getting done prior to the time when I came into office. So that's why I had Josh make contact with you on what your plans were. It just didn't seem like anything was moving forward on that project.
You can see the binder in front of you and the amount of work that I have done on it.
I get that, but you're talking 2018 to 2022, not a lot got done.
I started construction in June of 2018, no, June of 2019, I'm sorry.
I understand that you're doing it by yourself, but I want to know any way that I can, but.
The current progress you see is the result of three years.
And this is a high-profile location in the city of Rensselaer?
I understand.
So I hope you understand our questioning, even when we look back at 2019, there was already something trying to be addressed about getting this fixed.
When I purchased the building, before I even started construction.
Okay.
And then?
A couple times since then. Once since then, and it was the same year.
The thing I just tried to soak up, then in 2023?
Correct.
You got a stop work order?
Correct.
And that was because of?
Because it was a class one structure. According to Josh, it needed state-approved plans.
Did you check on that?
Yeah.
And the cost for that was?
Well, I think from this point, let's you and I sit down and talk about this.
Okay.
Because this is a priority for me. I'm tired of some homes, not necessarily this building, but this building certainly looks bad. Some homes that just don't get any attention at all and it drives down the value of other people's houses in that area. And it's just unacceptable for us in the city of Rensselaer to have some of that stuff around. Now, I see you're trying your best on this one, but we need something that moves a little quicker. And you and I probably need to talk about what that is so that we are on the same page. Does that make sense? So I'll get ahold of you tomorrow. Find out when you've got some time to discuss this. But I understand where you were putting the mind on some of that. So a lot of it's not on your fault, especially in 2023. I did not know anything about that. No. So you and I will get together tomorrow and talk in depth about where we want to go with this project.
If you have that documentation.
Yeah, make copies for the board of works.
Please, sir. All right. Thank you, Isaac.
Thank you.
All right. There's nothing else before the Board of Works. Been a motion a second to adjourn the Board of Works. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned, sorry. We'll go ahead and call the meeting of the City Council, the Rensselaer Utility Board, to order this time. And we'll go ahead and start with the invocation by Pastor Jeff Seeger. Good to see you again, Jeff.
Good to be here. Well, just a short reading from the Book of Ecclesiastes. Two are better than one because they have a good return for their work. If one falls down, his friend can help him up. It's pity the man who falls and has no one to help him up. When one may be overpowered, two can defend themselves. A cord of three strands is not quickly broken. Let us pray. Holy God, thank you for loving us like you do and help us to discern your will and your way as we deliberate the business in the Rensselaer City Council. Guide our leaders into making wise decisions. Lead our conversations. We temper our spirits with mercy and justice. We appreciate the freedom we enjoy here in the heartland of Indiana, in Jasper County. Keep our residents safe and thank you for the hometown field we cherish. Let all voices be heard as we bring issues to the fore and help us to work together for the betterment of all involved. We pray for peace and well-being for all our citizens and businesses. And we lift up all things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jeff. We'll see you soon. All right. Christine, you want to start with your poll?
Okay, Mayor Jeff Phillips.
Here.
Deputy District Director Christopher Martin, Russ Overton. Kevin Armel.
Here.
Noel Wash Wiser.
Yes.
Jeff Rayburn. Ernest Watson Jr.
Here.
City Attorney Todd Sammons.
Here.
Cemetery Caretaker Joe Effender. Fire Chief Kenny Hahn.
Here.
Police Chief Matt Anderson.
Here.
Utility Office Manager Heather Smart.
Here.
Manager of Electric Operations Heath Malone.
Here.
Park Superintendent Heather Hall.
Yes.
Street Water Sewer and Sanitation Superintendent Bryce Black.
Here.
Gas Superintendent Todd Wilson.
Here.
And Assistant Superintendent Josh Eldridge.
All right. Counsel, you reported the minutes of our last meeting. Are there any changes or corrections that need to be done at this time?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes that were presented.
Been a motion a second to accept the minutes that were presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, counsel. Have we reserved this time for citizens' comments? Is there anyone that wants to address the city council at this time? Hearing none, we'll get into our agenda and we'll start off with the material list of generation substations slash transformer. Heath?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're up.
We have a lot of material structures left over in the substation that was connected to the plant. We don't have a use for those anymore. We would like to start parting those out, selling them. We've had people inquire about them, but we'd have to advertise and do things like that. We're just hoping we can get permission to pursue that.
It's not always useful to us.
We have some things, the 69 breakers, and there's some parts that, yes, we're going to keep that we can use out of eager when we do upgrade, but mostly, no, we don't have any use for it. We are looking to sell that transformer that's there as well. It's kind of a unique thing since it's a step-up transformer. It may take us a while to get rid of that. So that's why we'd like to start advertising for it.
I'll make a motion to allow the electric department to move forward.
Been a motion a second to allow the electric department to move forward. Can you explain how we're going to do that?
We will need to advertise newspaper like we normally do, but we are looking at using Munisabit. It's an online auction site. A lot of the places, a lot of states actually use it. I think it'll be a good fit for us. It's a good networking opportunity.
All right. Been a motion a second to allow Heath to move forward by using Munisabit and to get rid of some of our extra generation transformers and parts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, counsel. Next is our gas tracker. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, the tracker of 0.4165 is a decrease of 0.0457, so a decrease of four cents per 100 cubic feet.
Make a motion we approve. Gas Tracker Resolution 26-2025.
Been a motion a second to approve Gas Tracker Resolution 26-2025. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, thank you, counsel. SRF Signatory Authorization Resolution, Bryce, you, oh, I can bring that up. This is a resolution we need to get signed by the council. Used to have Mr. Lockridge's name on there to make changes in our signatory authorization list. So now we need to add Bryce Black to that to help us make changes at SRF.
Not just add him, to remove Mr. Lockridge.
All right. Counsel, how do you feel?
I mean, it's motion.
Been a motion a second to go and approve the SRF loan program's signatory authorization resolution to remove Jerry and then add Bryce. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Andrew, do you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, Mayor. I will just advise the council that this is for the drinking water infrastructure project. So it's highly likely we will see another one of these for the wastewater project in the very near future.
Thank you. Ratifying the poll, we had to take a poll because we had a little lengthy meeting last, last meeting. So we did not approve the claims. I had Alina contact each of the council members and then agreed to ratify this. Might be difficult now, I just realized, since Ernest was gone. So we may need to move this back to our next meeting to ratify that. Because Ernest could not vote on it. So we'll bring that up for our next council meeting since we're missing two council members also. Resolution 27-2025 is a transfer of funds.
Okay, yes, there is a transfer from the general fund of $15,300 and then another transfer for PS Lit for $63,800.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 27-2025.
Been a motion a second to approve the Resolution 27-2025, the transfer of funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, thank you. Good luck, chief. Next is unfinished business. I don't have any. Does council have any unfinished business they want to discuss? Next would be committee reports. Hearing none, we'll move on to administrative comments. The only one I had is the food pantry came to us, requested a contribution. I talked with council president Wiser today. She was interested in maybe doing a $1,000 donation from the Public Relations Fund. This way, we're not using any tax dollars at this point as we're entering into a year that is definitely causing a great deal of uncertainty on where we'll be. But at least we're going to address it and give some from the Community Relations Fund to them. So it's up to council if you want to do something like that this year.
Did you say number? I'm sorry.
A thousand. For now.
For now.
Well, there's not a whole lot in that fund, but at least we'll make a contribution to them and hopefully keep them moving forward.
We need help. I make the motion to begin with $1,000 now.
Been a motion a second to go ahead and allow us to contribute $1,000 to the food pantry from the Public Relations Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, counsel. I have one other part. We'll save that till we have more of our council members here also, and that's all I have. Councilman Armel.
I have nothing.
Chrissy, anything from the clerk's office? Councilman Watson?
Yes, I have a letter coming from the Legion. The dinner is about to happen at Thanksgiving tonight. While I'll be presenting that to you all. We have donated to that for all the time I've been a councilman, so I think last year we gave $750 or something.
With that, the community relations too, right?
Yes.
Public relations.
So that, we should put that in our minds.
Going to be that time. We're in September. Anything else?
Yep. We noticed the claims are not on the agenda.
Oh, we probably need to approve the claims anyway, though.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for reminding us again. Counsel, how do you feel about approving the claims that were presented?
Make a motion to approve these claims.
Been a motion a second to approve the claims that were presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At least we don't have to fool the council a second time. Anything else, Councilman Rayburn?
That's it, thank you.
Appreciate your thoroughness there. Hearing nothing else, we'll start with supervisors. Chief Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I bring up, there were no real issues at the festival this weekend other than just traffic related on college. But try to stay on top of it as much as we can. Sometimes people don't read the signs, won't pay attention to barricades, so.
I was thinking, I know I'm getting older. Maybe we need bigger font size or something that might help people read that. I know we talked briefly this morning at our meeting. We'll have to look for any kind of alternative to help with some of that traffic. It was very well attended, so that's probably why we had so much traffic. So that's a good thing. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Attorney Sammons?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Heather?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
At least you two, Heather's not sitting together, so. Kenny?
Thanks, Mayor. Pancake breakfast, we served around 650, 700. We're kind of unsure the numbers for a technical problem that occurred. Fire station will be getting its sprinkler system, fire sprinkler system recertified this Thursday. And I will be out of town at the chief's leadership conference in Noblesville, 17 through the 19th. And a long-awaited vacation will be the last week of the month, first week of October, so do not call me.
I have, I entertain questions.
Hearing no questions. Heath, you're up.
Thank you. Our capital improvement plan has us purchasing a couple of trucks in the next two years. In 2027, we're scheduled to get a bucket truck. And then in 2026, we're looking at getting another pickup truck or possibly a service van for the theater department. Bucket trucks are generally two to two and a half years out right now, so we're a little bit behind on that. So I'd like to. So I'd like to get permission to start getting quotes for those.
I'll make a motion to allow Heath to provide the quotes.
Second.
Been a motion, a second to allow you to go out there and start getting quotes for those trucks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have yet.
All right. Bryce, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. The contractor on the I sixty-five project mobilized today and started unloading skids of water main and sewer main piping. And then the hope is to begin digging the boring pit sometime this week. And then the Seventh Street project will be starting with the tap on Angelica and Seventh tomorrow morning. Hopefully start putting main in the ground shortly after, along with everything goes well. And all the sewer and storm structures are on order, so we should be getting all of that material here in the next week to ten days, hopefully. That's all I have this evening.
All right. That was quick. Heather Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates for counsel this evening. Tomorrow, the concrete tea boxes will be poured for the red teas on our disc golf course at Brookside Park. We were able to raise the money through our league and through our hole sponsors. So we hope to also add tea boxes to our blue holes as well, and we'll do that in the future. The gazebo that was gifted to us will be delivered to Millroy Park on Wednesday of this week. So phase one was the installation of the pad and phase two is the delivery of the gazebo. And then phase three will be the path to the gazebo. Uh, on Wednesday evening of this week, we will have the first of a series of paint workshops in our parks this fall. It will take place at Folsom Park at five thirty P.M. Registration forms are now being accepted for this year pro-trail. And golf registration forms are being accepted at this time. Remember, we're having our first-ever Rensselaer Parks Golf Abbey on October the tenth at Crest Creek. Do you have any questions for me, counsel?
Who's doing the concrete work on the tee pads?
The city. We have a city team together that will work on it together.
That it?
That's all for today, sir.
Thank you. Andrew, is there anything else that counsel needs to be aware of?
I think we've covered it, Mayor.
Thank you, Reverend. I was thinking the same thing. Seems like there's a lot today.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would say is on the LDCB project, we continue to work with the contractor. We actually met with them last week on a few value engineering ideas for the project. And if any of those have merit, we will evaluate them, bring them to Bryce's attention. And then ultimately, if it works, if it's worthwhile. But looking for opportunities to save where we can.
And the next Thursday is our first meeting on, so construction meeting, progress meeting?
Yes. Construction progress meeting next Thursday.
Good.
They're currently in administrative notice to proceed, so bought us some medals and upfront paperwork so that they can be efficient with their time on site.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
I saved Mr. Wilson for last because I knew he wants to get out here and watch the Bears game.
Fifty people showed up for the open house, which I thought was good.
How much was it?
Hundred and fifty.
That was nice.
So...
Food was great.
Yes, it was. All did a really good job. And then the woman lady said, this is the most she's had people come up and talk to her. So that's good too. And the guys are working on lines and go Bears.
Anything else, counsel?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Been a motion, a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Kenny.
I...
I didn't, I forgot to ask.
I don't remember mentioning her, so I'm not sure.